Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. It's 6 o'clock on Tuesday, June 10, 2025. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I'm going to note for the record, this meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communication during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Does anybody record this meeting? Seeing none, I know for the record that participating in tonight's meeting are our board members Liz Klein and Julie Straley and Chair William Ramsey. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. For those willing and able, please stand and face the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I know some of these meetings happen before Julie's time on the board, so Liz, are you prepared to move forward?
Yes.
All right. When you're ready, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 13, 2025.
Now, second that motion, all those who favor by real call. Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Julie?
Abstain.
Take a second motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 19, 2025.
I'd second that motion, all those who favor by real call. Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Julie?
Abstain.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 25, 2025.
I'd second that motion, all those who favor by real call. Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Julie?
Abstain.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 27, 2025.
I'd second that motion, all those who favor by real call. Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Julie?
Abstain.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 8, 2025.
I second that motion, all those who favor by real call. Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Julie?
Abstain.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 16, 2025.
I'd second that motion, all those who favor by real call. Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Julie?
Abstain.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Pride Month Proclamation. This is something, a proclamation that we do every month in Hingham. It's a wonderful way to celebrate our community. And so we're going to break it up as we do our proclamations into three separate parts. And Julie, when you're ready, you can proceed.
Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, lesbian, gay, bi, trans, queer, or questioning plus LGBTQ plus Pride Month proclamation. Whereas, Hingham is a community that values diversity and inclusion and is committed to equal rights and opportunities for all its residents. And whereas, Hingham recognizes the important contributions of its LGBTQ plus residents to the town's history, culture, economy, and civic life. And whereas, June 28, 2025 marks the 56th anniversary of the Stonewall Riots, an event that gave rise to the beginning of the gay rights movement in the United States. And whereas, June is now recognized across the country and in the Commonwealth as Pride Month.
And whereas, we celebrate the accomplishments of the LGBTQ plus community towards securing important rights and freedoms, often through struggle and adversity. And whereas, we remain vigilant against continued oppression and discrimination against the LGBTQ plus community and against any new political efforts to overturn these accomplishments. And whereas, we affirm our support for our LGBTQ plus residents, including our students and our employees, vendors and visitors, and stand with them to protect their civil rights and ability to live openly without fear. And whereas, we congratulate the members of the Hingham Pride Project for their efforts to increase LGBTQ plus visibility and to support LGBTQ plus citizens, particularly our LGBTQ plus youth, through the distribution of thousands of pride flags to individuals, families, and organizations throughout Hingham.
And whereas, we acknowledge the important efforts of the Hingham School Committee, the School Department leadership, teachers, and staff to support our LGBTQ plus students and to help all students meet core educational competencies that prioritize social, emotional learning, health and safety, and respect for others. Now therefore, we, William C. Ramsey, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Julie M. Straley, Select Board of Hingham, do hereby proclaim June 2025 to be lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex Pride Months. Sign this 25th day of June 2025. William C. Ramsey, Chair, Elizabeth F. Klein, Julie M. Straley. And with that, I will take a motion.
I make a motion to proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
All those who favor by real call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the Juneteenth Proclamation. So we're going to break this one up similar to the last one. So Liz, when you're ready, you can start.
Great. Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, Juneteenth Independence Day Proclamation. Whereas, on June 19, 1865, two and a half years after President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and that enslaved people were now free. And whereas, Major General Granger announced to the residents of Texas, the people of Texas are informed that, in accordance with a proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves and the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor.
And whereas, the first Juneteenth celebration was held in Texas in 1866. Since then, Juneteenth has been celebrated in communities across the United States, providing an opportunity to mark the emancipation of enslaved people. And whereas, June 19 is now designated as a state holiday in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and a federal holiday in the United States.
And whereas, on this day, hundreds of communities across the country, people of all races, nationalities, and religions, join hands to acknowledge the painful history and lasting systemic impact of slavery and racial injustice in the United States. Juneteenth is an opportunity to recommit ourselves to the goal of creating a more equal and just society, an effort that continues today. Now therefore, we, William C. Ramsey, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Julie M. Straley, Select Board of Hingham, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2025 to be Juneteenth Independence Day, and we urge each citizen to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. Sign this 20th day of June 2025. William C. Ramsey, Chair, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Julie M. Straley. And with that, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to proclaim June 19, 2025 as Juneteenth Independence Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
All those who favor by real call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. All right. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Assistant Harbor Master. Do we have Ken on the line? Ken, good evening. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Good evening.
Talk to us about this appointment.
Sure. So we have one appointment for you today, and that's James Arnn Priester. He currently lives in Quincy and he works for Massport full-time, and he looks to be joining up with us as an Assistant Harbor Master. I'm working on a part-time basis.
Has he worked, has he been an Assistant Harbor Master before, Ken? Is he new?
He has not been an Assistant Harbor Master before. He's new, but he's not new to the area. He grew up in Westwood. Like I said, he presently lives in Quincy, and he also works part-time for Boston Harbor Cruises, so he's very familiar with the Boston area.
Excellent. Great. Liz, do you have any questions?
And Ken, this appointment is just for this summer, this season?
So appointments are for three years.
Three years, okay.
I'm partying to stay long.
Okay.
Julie, any questions?
No questions, thanks.
Do any members of the public have any questions about this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to, sorry, to appoint, sorry, I lost his name. I'm here.
James Arnn.
James Arnn Priester, sorry about that, as a part-time Assistant Harbor Master for the Town of Hingham for a three-year term ending June 30, 2028.
Second.
All those who favor by real call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. All right, Ken, getting close to water time, right?
Absolutely. July's coming quick. It's a busy season.
Excellent.
Hopefully it'll be sunny on a weekend.
Hopefully it won't rain on Saturday. You guys can get in the water.
Yes.
We'll see.
Thank you.
All right. Good seeing you, Ken.
Good seeing you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Break Rock Brewing LLC for the Summer Solstice at World's End to be held on Saturday, June 21, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, June 22, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I believe we have Jay Southwood with us and maybe Alisa Scheck. I see Alisa. Alisa, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm great. Are you solo tonight or is Jay with you?
I thought he was going to be here, but I do not see him on the screen in front of me, so I am thinking that he's not.
All right. So it's all you. Go ahead, tell us about your application.
Sure. Well, we do this event every year. We have the Aldous Collins Band playing, and we have some food trucks, some beer trucks, and we have 350 cars, 350 cars come and drive onto the location and have this after concert. We have reached out to the police department for a detail, and yeah, it should run how it does every year, very smoothly.
Actually, still, I'm sorry. Go ahead, we lost you there.
Just what other information do you need from me?
That's helpful. We're familiar with the event. Let me ask you, Alisa, you said 300 cars are anticipated to attend?
Yes.
So it could be between roughly two to five people in a car, maybe?
Yes.
All right. And you said that you, the police department is considering a detail?
Yes.
All right. I think that's probably a good idea. It's a lot of people there.
Yeah.
But I know, you know, you've had this event in the past, it's been successful, it's run very well. I don't believe we've received any complaints last year from any residents, so you're doing a good job with it. But let me see if anybody else had any questions. Liz, I'm sorry, Julie, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Liz, any questions?
I reviewed the application. I know this event has run very smoothly and successfully in the past, so thank you for continuing it. I know the residents look forward to it every year. So just want to make a comment. The estimated attendance with the 300, 350 cars is between 1,000 and 1,500, and this is one of the Tier One events allowed at World's End, which that is all in order as well, right, Tom, in terms of the agreement with the neighborhood and the traffic and parking management plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. So I know the detail is required, correct?
Yes.
Okay. No other questions, thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions about this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Break Rock Brewing LLC for the Summer Solstice at World's End to be held on Saturday, June 21, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, June 22, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
All those who favor by real call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. All right. Alisa, stay right there. You got a couple others, I think, this evening, so.
Yes.
All right. Next item is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Steel Wagon Brewing Company LLC for the Summer Solstice at World's End to be held on Saturday, June 21, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, June 22, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So this is a separate agenda item because it's a separate brewery, is that correct, Tom? At the same date, it's just a different brewery?
Different license.
So we have to give a different license for it?
Yep.
All right. So obviously, we're considering Steel Wagon on this one and not Break Rock, Alisa, but anything else that we should know about this, this event that you didn't discuss previously?
Nope. It's the same event, same details. We've worked with both of these breweries in the past, and they've always been wonderful, so it's all good.
All right. I don't have any questions. Liz, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Julie, any questions?
No questions.
Any questions from any members of the public? All right. With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage license to Steel Wagon Beer Company LLC for the Summer Solstice at World's End to be held on Saturday, June 21, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, June 22, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
All those who favor by real call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Break Rock Brewing LLC for the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, June 26, 2025, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Alisa, I know this is a different event on a different day, a different location, so go ahead and tell us about this event.
Sure. So this is our Sunset Picnic series. We've run them for the past few years, mostly every week throughout the summer. This year, we're only doing four of them. So this event starts at 6:00 p.m. We don't have a hard cap on the number of people we let in, but we usually sell about 300 tickets, and we do parking in our fields and parking lot. We've also requested a detail for this event, and the event takes place on the Weir River Farm property on our studio lawn, so that's the main part of the property. And it's a dead-end street, so we never have any issues with parking or traffic. And we always post signs saying no alcohol beyond this point. There's two entrances in and out of that event space. And again, been doing it for years and never had any issues, so we're looking forward to it.
And this event, Alisa, so it's 300 tickets, not cars, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I would note that this has been going off for several years. We've had no, no concerns or issues raised by butters, so thank you for that. Julie, any questions?
No. Well, I was looking through the one-day special permit application. I see the one for July in our packet, but I don't see the one for June in the packet. Oh, no. I see it now. Okay, sorry. So no questions, thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Well, just to clarify that for these, the Sunset Picnics, it's one license, one brewery per event, per date, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. No other questions.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Break Rock Brewing LLC for the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, June 26, 2025, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
All those who favor by real call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. All right, I think you have one more, Alisa.
Yes.
This one is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Steel Wagon Brewery Company LLC for the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, July 17, 2025, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I don't see Michael, so I think you got this one also. So go ahead, tell us about this event.
Sure. It's the same exact as the last one, just with a different beer vendor. So same number of people expected, same, you know, we, same location. We've requested a police detail, so same time, and yeah, everything exactly the same as the last one.
I'm sorry, how many people, how many tickets did you say?
We usually, we don't have a hard cap on it, but we usually receive about 300 people.
About 300, great. All right. Liz, any questions?
Just to, again, confirm, there's no rain date for these, the Sunset Picnics, correct?
Right.
Okay. No other questions.
Julie, any questions?
No questions.
Do any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Steel Wagon Beer Company LLC for the Weir River Farm Sunset Picnics to be held on Thursday, July 17, 2025, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
All those who favor by real call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. All right, Alisa, good luck this summer. It's only going to be busy.
Thank you so much. Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right. Good luck. All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the application for amendment, change of officers, stock and ownership interest submitted by Amelia Ruth Corporation, doing business as Main Street Market and Spirits, 464 Main Street. I just see counsel here. Attorney Sullivan, how are you?
I'm fine.
Come on up the podium, and I know who you are, but for those at home, state you, just your name, address, position, all that good stuff.
My name is Gregory Sullivan. I'm an attorney representing Amelia Ruth Corporation. My office is at 59 Water Street in Hingham. Been practicing there now for close to 48 years.
Excellent, excellent. It's good to see you this evening. Just tell us what you, what you're asking us to do tonight.
This is a change of ownership and director. My client, Victoria Patel, has been 100% owner of this business. She has an investor, Tanvi Perik, who's coming in with an infusion of capital and will be a director of the corporation. I think it's pretty much that simple.
All right. Everything seems to be in order based on the submitted packet. Tom, no issues from the police department on this application, correct?
That's right.
All right. Greg, I tell you, every time I drive by Main Street Market, I still call it Riddles. And my, my kid's like, why do you call it Riddles? I'm like, there's always Riddles growing up.
It was Lynch's before it was Riddles, for me.
You got me on that one. Liz, do you have any questions?
I also reviewed the application. I see both have cleared the Corey check, so thank you. And will there be any changes to, obvious to people that shop or visit there?
I don't think there'll be any obvious changes. Obviously, it puts the corporation in a stronger position financially to make investments, but the ABCs of those I'm not familiar with.
Okay.
I do know that Victoria Patel does a great job and has done a great job at all the different endeavors she's been involved with over the years.
Good. Thank you.
Julie, any questions?
No questions, thanks.
Any members of the public have any question or comments about this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application submitted by Amelia Ruth Corp., doing business as Main Street Market and Spirits, 484 Main Street, Hingham, for a change of officers, stock and ownership interest in accordance with the application for amendment, change of officers, stock or ownership interest, filed with the Town of Hingham on May 5, 2025, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
All those who favor by real call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Greg, good to see you again.
Thank you all very much.
Give my best, give my best to Kristen, so I said love.
Will do.
Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the application for amendment, change of officers, stock and ownership interest submitted by Burton's Grill of Hingham LLC, doing business as Burton's Grill, 94 Derby Street, Hingham. So do we have, okay, who do we have here? Do we have this, is it Margot?
Hi. Yes.
Margot, hi, good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. My name is Margot Gillis. I am an attorney with McDermott Quilting, Miller &amp; Hanley in Boston, and I am here on behalf of the licensee Burton's Grill of Hingham LLC, doing business as Burton's Grill in their application for a change of LLC manager. This change is administrative and will not affect the day-to-day operations of the license. There are five current LLC managers, and so we're removing three. Denise Herrera, Kevin Heron, and John Doyle are being removed, and then Anthony Akil and Mitchell Kahn will remain as LLC managers. They've previously been approved by this board and the ABCC, and they are the two remaining on the license. I want to thank you for hearing this application, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, counsel, thanks very much. A quick question for you. You were here about two weeks ago with another application. What's, tell me about the difference between what you're asking us to do tonight and what you asked us to do two or three weeks ago.
What application are you referring to?
Was it a change of manager or an alcohol-related issue?
This is my, this is my first time before this board. I'm only representing them for a change of LLC manager.
Okay. Tom, do you remember what it was?
It was, yeah, it was, it was for Burton's. I think it was a change of manager for the actual manager of the store. So this is, this is more of a change in the organizational structure, so therefore a different process through the ABCC.
Okay. That's my memory as well. Julie, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Liz, any questions?
No other questions, thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the application submitted by Burton's Grill of Hingham, doing business as Burton's Grill, 94 Derby Street, Hingham, for a change of LLC managers in accordance with the application for amendment, change of officers, stock or ownership interest, filed with the Town of Hingham on May 19, 2025, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
All those who favor by real call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously. All right, good luck, Attorney Gillis.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion and potential vote to file a petition for a special act under Article 97 of the Articles of Amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth in accordance with Article 16 of the 2025 Town of Hingham Annual Meeting. I believe we have Real Estate Counsel Susan Murphy on the, on the Zoom. Susan, good evening.
Good evening. So as you just read, Mr. Chair, the Article 16 of Town Meeting authorized, not required, the Select Board to request the filings of this legislation. This was a two-thirds vote of Town Meeting to authorize this, and so this is just a procedural vote of the Select Board. If the board votes in favor, then the bill will be forwarded to your state rep and state senator for filing with the legislature.
Trying to mute that. All right, Susan, with respect to the process, so, so does, does the, does the, do our, does Joan and Pat both have to file something, or does one file something in the House, and then it goes to the Senate? Just talk a little about the process briefly, if you know about it.
Yeah, I mean, I believe that Representative Muschino will file first, and then she'll coordinate with Senator O'Connor to file on the, on the Senate side.
Okay, great. And as Susan indicated, this is a procedural vote. We're making, we're considering it based on the two-thirds vote authorized at Town Meeting for the design of the HCal at this location. So Liz, do you have any questions?
No other questions, thank you.
Julie, any questions?
No questions.
Any members of the public have any question or comments about this agenda item? I'd seen none, I'd take a motion.
I'll make a motion to file a petition with the General Court of the Commonwealth, Commonwealth of Massachusetts to request a special act under Article 97 of the Articles of Amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth in accordance with Article 16 of the 2025 Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
All those who favor by real call, Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Susan. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One step closer.
Easy one tonight, Tom. Good seeing you. All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion of the FY26 Select Board Goal Setting. So I'm gonna turn it over to Tom. If you wanna lead the discussion, the three of us will, we'll add to it.
Okay, thank you. The board held a great session a couple of weeks ago to discuss the, the goals for this coming year for the FY26 Select Board Goals. There were five categories. I'll just walk through each of them, a number of sub-bullet points that I'll, that I'll highlight as I go through them. The first general category for, for board goals was to invest in the infrastructure. That includes things like, obviously, the public safety facility and holding the ribbon-cutting ceremony sometime in July here, looking like it's gonna be mid to late July. Perhaps a, engaging in a design process and including value engineering for the Center for Active Living. We're looking to address some parking issues through the planning board and rebid the pool project, get that moving again. We'll have the Hingham Harbor Resiliency Projects underway, using the appropriation that was approved here at the past, at this past Town Meeting. Using, spending the ARPA funds for the 3A sewer main replacement projects that you see ongoing now. The, the new property that we own over at 30 Summer Street, we wanted to find that planned use a little bit better. We fitted it out, so it's ready to roll, and we want to try to assess potential of that location for, for activity that complements other harbor events. I think we're looking for, to determine the next steps for the governance structure for water and sewer, and then perhaps, and ramp up to, to the Town Meeting in '26. Perhaps a long-term, some long-term capital planning to include, to renew, to review the town-owned buildings and their systems and space needs with some money that was allocated back in, at Town Meeting in 2020, to define some uses, and then perhaps even with a ramp up towards AM, Town Meeting 2026 for disposition authority. And then begin work on a, on a, what I think has been a long-term goal for a lot of people, which is, which would be a great, a great asset, would be a 10-year capital plan. We've been talking about that for a long time, and that's large capital projects, not your average annual capital, capital effort. And then we're talking about a, a fun initiative to think about renaming some of the meeting rooms at Town Hall, make things a little bit more, more personal, and, and, you know, indicative of our community. So I think it's a great idea. The next large category was the financial, a financial stewardship category. Within there, obviously, the first and, and biggest one perhaps was to continue the commitment that the board has made to the FY24 to '28 Management, Financial Management Plan, otherwise known as the MOU. We could re-engage in the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force to help us analyze options for the next MOU as the first one starts to sunset. That might help us to map options for getting from FY27 to FY36, which is when the pension liability looks to be fully funded, which would be a big boon to the annual budget. So, so that's an effort that the, we could engage a Sustainable Budgeting Task Force back in again. To identify, perhaps identifying non-property tax revenue ideas such as, again, the evaluated real estate transfer fee option, something that came up a couple of years ago. Maybe the meals tax increase in looking to, to capitalize on that. If the Municipal Empowerment Act passes, we could host a Hingham Restaurant Week to promote tourism and bump up the meals tax revenue, and then evaluate some departmental fees that perhaps have gotten outdated and need to be, need to be refreshed. And then we could look to review the town's property and liability insurance coverage and costs. That's an effort that we've been engaged in and will continue to work towards. That may result in some, some savings. And then we wanna, of course, hold some town economic forums in the ramp up to ATM 2026, which is when we'll be talking about more large capital projects such as the Hingham Center for Active Living Project, and then try to understand what the cost implications are to long-term and short-term to that project. The economic development goal. This one, you know, I think we're gonna hear some of this tonight with our economic development presentation from Art and HDIC and the Planning Board here in about a half an hour. So that'll help us to find some next steps for the Economic Development Plan. We can engage the HDIC or the Hingham Development and Industrial Commission, determine, to determine some, some ways for volunteers to organize and support economic development in town. And then, of course, Art has us engaged in a regional NWRA water study, and that needs to be finalized and then subsequently presented to the community to evaluate the possibility of applying MWRA water capacity to the town. The fourth category, or build the team. So haven't fully announced this to the town officially yet, though it's not been, it's perhaps been an openly discussed secret. Michelle Montziger, our beloved Assistant Town Administrator for Finance, is moving on, so we need to work to replace that position. That effort has, is underway. Hopefully, we'll, good timing, Sebastian. The, that effort is underway, and we will be, we'll be replacing that, Michelle's position, not her, of course, her position sometime in the near future. We will be evaluating our health insurance costs and our programs here. We're engaging a consultant this June. That work will be done with a deliverable hopefully by the calendar, by the end of the calendar year. We need to complete our collective bargaining sessions with the town's unions. And then the fifth category of enhancing communications would be things like investing, continuing to invest and expand on our use of the MyHingham app, which has been very successful to date, to try to add some depth to the, to the request function and, and deploy a notification function so that we can, it's a two-way tool, not just a one-way tool going forward. And then we'll plan an annual Fall Town Meeting with all Town, not, not Town Meeting, Fall Meeting, sorry, with all Town Boards and Committees' Chairs to cover a number of things, including open meeting law regulations, how to run a meeting, the public records law, all sorts of, all sorts of great information that we'll be passing along to all of our board chairs and vice chairs. We'll consider doing some short weekly videos with the board and myself as needed. We'll rotate the Select Board meetings to locations outside of Town Hall for, for the first time, and kind of highlight some of the other assets that the town has. We'll be able to better utilize Harbor Media as a communications resource. We'll implement Town Emails for some elected or for all of elected town officials, not appointed. There's 400 of them, that would be expensive, but the elected town officials, it felt appropriate that we're gonna extend that. And then, obviously, not obviously, but also to continue researching the electronic voting options for a Town Meeting. So those were the goals as discussed by the Select Board, and that's what we came up with.
So why don't we kind of break them down by different areas, and see if we can add to it, and we'll go, you know, item, we'll go to one through five here. So I guess I'll start first. So, public safety facility, thrilled with it. I was actually, I was there on Friday. I just kind of showed up. I texted Dave, I'm like, Cam, outside, can you open the door? The fire part of it, the box of fire, the firefighters have, to the, the police area, it's, it's, it's really wonderful. And maybe most importantly, is that the police officers and the firefighters I spoke with are just thrilled about it. So they're really, really excited about it. I think we're all excited about it. We were hoping to possibly do a ribbon-cutting opening ceremony on July 1st. Unfortunately, not everyone's gonna be here that day, and the Fire Department actually will not be in fully operational until mid-July as well. So we're gonna hold it off to maybe mid-July. Hopefully, both, both Fire and Police will be in there by then, and we're gonna have a community-wide event. That's gonna be great. And I've asked the chiefs through Tom to make sure that community tours are scheduled. So those in the community who are watching tonight, you will have an opportunity to go in after the ribbon, ribbon-cutting ceremony to tour the building, and I hope you take advantage of it, because we're very appreciative of your support of this project. So everybody should go check it out. I also love the fire pole, by the way. The fire pole is, I don't think I'm ever gonna go down it, but I saw the fire, and the fire part of it, which was great. All right, Center for Active Living, I was, that's a big, I think that's a major goal for this board and our community this year, and that's gonna be a big effort going forward, one we're gonna start pretty soon. Either late summer, early fall, to start socializing that, getting people's input on it, working with the design team, working with our scenic community, and working with the community at large to try to get the best design we can going to Town Meeting in the spring. That's gonna be a big focus this year. Not addressing the litigation of the pool, Tom, but
Right.
If, if it, you know, hopefully, when it is resolved, can you, what would be the next steps after it, after litigation, if you could just briefly talk about that? Because people have asked me, what do you, you know, when you do get it resolved, hopefully soon, but, you know, we still have to go through the process, what's the town gonna do next? So what will go next?
So we have to go through permitting. As, as we go through that permitting effort with the Planning Board, we've, we've posted some meetings with them, and historic, then I think we'll have to rebid the project, get new quotes and new bids to, to, to build everything. And if we still have the resources and it's still within the appropriation, then we'll move forward. If not, we'll have to reassess and, and evaluate a valued, value-engineered pool project, and, and perhaps rebid that project, and obviously staying within scope, so.
So that will go on throughout the year, possibly? Yeah, great, okay, fantastic.
As soon as possible, as soon as we have everything and we're able to move, we will with the RFPs. Hopefully, we only have to do it once.
Fantastic. I know, I know we've been talking about a planned use for 30 Summer, and that's gonna be a focus this year, so I'm looking forward to that discussion. Also, at our goal-setting meeting, we talked about the creation of an independent potential water sewer board that would oversee Weir River and our sewer department. We've already combined operations, building's already been combined operationally. I think we staged the set. We have a lot of work to do with probably legislative assistance, special acts, as well as Town Meeting votes. So we'll be working on, we'll be discussing that this year with the public to see, you know, where the community wants to go with the governance of the water, water board and the Sewer Commission. And I think I'm gonna stop there. So let me turn it over to my colleagues, see if they have any questions. So Julie, go ahead.
No questions. I support all these goals for, in the area of infrastructure, what I'm really looking forward to is getting started on plant, facilities planning, identifying all the buildings that we have in town, and identifying, you know, what, what shape these buildings are in, and, and the data from that would start feeding the longer-term capital planning. So I'm looking forward to that, and I'm really, I'm glad we're finally doing it.
Excellent. Liz?
Agreed. Well, thank you to my colleagues. This was a really, I think, thoughtful session, and we were able to look back at the Hingham Master Plan and that vision, and make sure that the goals for this year were aligned with that and support that, and I feel confident that they do. I'll just add that, you know, the, as kind of sub-points that Tom mentioned under infrastructure, I think it's a, it's a good balance and very much represents what we heard at Town Meeting in terms of what we want for this community and in terms of new infrastructure, but also I think we heard loud and clear that we want to take care of the assets we have, and really understand what we have and what the maintenance schedule needs to be, and then, of course, that 10-year capital plan. So again, I think this is a good balance of, of building and growing, but also taking care of what we have.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to our second item, which is financial stewardship. First item there is a continuation, a continued commitment of the MOU, so we'll be talking about that as a board, where we want to go with that. I've, I've discussed, I've already started informal discussions with the Chair of the Advisor Committee and the Chair of the School Board, sorry, School Committee, to discuss what we want to do with this as well. It expires in FY27, correct, Michelle? So it'll be done, technically goes through this budget cycle, and then go into the next cycle, we will not have the MOU in effect. Is that, is that correct?
That's my understanding. It was written kind of assuming that there would be a different path in FY28, so it's open to how, however, the board and others would like to, to move forward after that.
Great, all right. And we're going to reconstitute the Sustainable Budget Task Force. Thank you, Liz, for volunteering to do that. I know this is a ton of work. I think over the last couple of years, that was one of the most successful efforts that we've had as a community, with some great people on it. So appreciate you offering to lead that. Thank you for doing that. You know, we often, often hear about the burden of property taxes in town, so, you know, at our meeting, we discussed some possible alternatives to it. Obviously, any sort of new idea, new tax, new revenue source, obviously gets people a little hesitant. So, you know, we're gonna work to socialize some ideas, possibly. Some of the, some of these ideas probably have to wait a while, but there's a possibility for a meals tax increase. That's a major source of revenue for us, but obviously, we could talk, talk about that as a group and see where we want to go with it. Okay, so our great restaurants in our great downtown area, and as Tom pointed out, it would also help our meals tax revenue to a certain extent. And we're gonna hold a town economic forums, public information sessions. A lot of that we'll be discussing, where we are economically, the impacts of the Center for Active Living, and we want to just make sure everybody understands where we are with our financial positions, with our goals, and where we are going in the future. So that's all I've got. Liz, do you want to add anything under that item?
Just, I'm excited to re-engage with the Sustainable Budget Task Force. It was a great team, and there's a lot more work to do as we analyze our, our next steps past FY27. So looking forward to getting that group together and starting that work this fall.
Julie?
I want to thank Liz as well for spearheading or getting back into the Sustainable Budget Task Force. It's just really important that we do our financial planning and continue and start it now so that when the MOU expires, that we're not caught without a plan. So I'm wholly in favor of these efforts.
All right, next item is economic development. I know we're gonna be talking about that in about 15 minutes this evening, so I don't have anything at this time, but let me see if Julie or Liz want to add anything at this time. Julie?
I don't have anything to add at this time.
Liz?
Nothing to add.
All right, building the team. Wanna, you know, emphasize just how irreplaceable Michelle's going to be, who's been tremendous in so many different ways. Just your, your, you know, what you've done for this town is, is amazing. So we'll talk about it more, but huge shoes to fill, Michelle, and we will, we will miss, miss having you, and you are welcome back here, anytime and any role, whenever the time is right. So, so as Tom mentioned that already. Health insurance analysis, I think this is a big one. We hear it a lot from the community. We're working toward engaging a consultant this month and into July, and we're gonna discuss about the different plans out there, how that would impact our town employees. We certainly hear a lot about the need to study that during the collective bargaining process and just in general for my town employees. So we're gonna start that process. We're gonna do it through a consultant, collective bargaining agreements. We're gonna include AdCom more in that process, so they have an idea of what our financial positions are when we try to negotiate these CBAs, which are always difficult, and thankful for the work that the Personnel Board does for us as we move forward with that. So anything under that item, Liz?
And nothing else to add, thank you.
Julie?
I'm just looking forward to the health insurance analysis. I think that's a really good start.
Great. Under enhanced communications, obviously, we hear a lot from residents about ways to improve communications with our, with our community. Tom mentioned the MyHingham app. That continues to evolve to getting people comfortable with it. We do get a lot of input from people about the MyHingham app, and I, I think the response times have been, have been good. So that's, we want to continue to do that, to open it up in the different areas of the town, to boost app uptake. We're planning an annual Fall Meeting. Julie, fantastic recommendation, where we would have all of the chairs of different committees all come together. We will share our goals, these goals, with our, with the people leading other boards and committees, as well as discuss what their goals are in potential Town Meeting articles. So Julie made that recommendation. I think it's fantastic. Also, I am meeting with Michelle Bocconi next week to talk about ways that we can better engage with Harbor Media for communication. Looking forward to that discussion, and using Town Emails for elected officials as well. And we're also gonna look at electronic voting for Town Meeting as an, as an item. So with that, let me see if anybody has any other comments. Julie?
Well, all these are exciting to me. I love the idea of better communications from the town and then getting better information from the people in the town back to us. So, but I'm especially excited about having the meeting in the fall. So, um, but I'm especially excited about having the meeting in the fall with all the town committee chairs. So we can use the opportunity to break down silos and, and work together and find out what's on the mind of, of those committees and what's on their to-do list and that they understand what the town, um, and the select board priorities are as well. So I think, um, that's a really exciting opportunity for this fall. And then of course, looking into electronic voting, I think that, that's, um, I'm looking forward to looking into that.
Liz?
I'll just add, um, I think enhancing communications is a, a priority for this board. Um, and as you can see, that manifests in many different ways. So using the MyHingham app, leveraging the technology that we have to communicate better with, um, residents. And so I'm thrilled that we'll be adding that push notification for that two-way communication. Um, and just again, the shared communication between town departments, the committees, um, as well as the public. So it's, it's a multi-pronged approach, um, that we just want to have a better flow of communication. And, um, having the right information out there is, is, is really critical to us. And of course, using, uh, Harbor Media as a, as a resource, uh, makes sense. Again, using the resources that we have to improve communication. So thrilled to see all of that.
Great. Thank you. So Tom and Art, rest up. Lot of work, yeah.
That's right.
Any members of the public have any question, the comments about the goals discussion? Sir, come on up. Will you come up with the podium? All right, that could be with Harry at home. Yeah, we'll bring the mic over to you. Yeah, we'll bring it over. You stay there. We'll bring it over to you. Thanks, Tom. Sir, if you could just state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
I feel like Phil Donahue.
Thank you. My name is Bill Schroeder. I've lived in Hingham since 66. Been on the advisory committee and other, other things, but I'm a little bit out of touch. So I'm here to, uh, kind of get caught up. And one of the things I would say that you didn't mention tonight, and I don't know who's responsible. But as long as I've been here, the roads have never been in such bad shape. And some of the repair jobs, they put down a paper, uh, thin coat and it's worn off in two years. What's going on? I mean, the roads are really bad. So I don't know if you guys have anything to do with it anymore, but I'd just like to say to me, it's as important as any topic that you've talked about today. Thank you.
Liz, I think that's a great point. And, um, if you, uh, contact us, let us know what roads they are. I can send the DPW director out there to, to take a look at. That's definitely part of our plan to look at roads and do road repair. There's some work done on Bill Street recently, some work done on French Street, but we can address concerns as they come up to us. But thank you for your comment. That's a good one. All right, um, so we don't, the next item is at seven o'clock. We cannot start before seven o'clock, but. You want to try to, we're not going to be able to get through all of them. It's a lot. What do you want to try?
Can we just say?
I think we have to name the names because I think it's illegal to name them. So you want to, want to try to get through some of them? Yeah, let's try. We might be able to. All right. So we're going to take some items out of the agenda real quick. We're going to move to item 16, which are, um, appointments, reappointments. And, um, we are going through the talent bank process of, uh, interviewing people and appointing people. But let's go through reappointments now. So, um, Julie, Liz, if you want to alternate the motions and I'll call them, that'd be great.
Sure.
So let's start, uh, with 16 to the Hingham Housing Authority Board.
May I start?
Go ahead.
I make a motion to reappoint Ruth Bennett to the Hingham Housing Authority Board to fill the tenant member seat for a term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All of the favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Pamela Bates, John Falvey, Bridget Ryan, and Mike Sutton to the Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
All those favored by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries unanimously.
I make a motion to reappoint Paul Healy to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All of the favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Lauren Galvin, Michael Mercurio, and Mario Romania as associate members of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a motion to reappoint Doug Farrington to the Audit Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All of the favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Lauren Murphy and Ray O'Neil to the Bear Cove Park Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a motion to reappoint Patricia Bray, Margaret Coleman, Patricia Collins, and Laura Spaziani to the Beautification Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Elliot Place and Joanne Hellman to the Climate Action Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a motion to reappoint Megan Baker and Jane McGrath to the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Erin Kelly to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a motion to reappoint Stephen White to the Country Club Management Committee for a three-year term ending, uh, June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Craig Hutchinson and Peter Schnorr to the Cultural Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a motion to reappoint Mike Galvin and Christopher Good to the Development and Industrial Commission for a five-year term ending June 30th, 2030.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Brad Moyer to the Energy Action Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a.
Go ahead. Let's continue.
Okay. I make a motion to reappoint the following members to the Fourth of July Parade Committee for a term ending December 31st, 2025. Jim Murphy, Monica Coinam, Quang, Coinam, DeWitt Delauter, Tom Hoffman, Louis O'Day, Mary Ellen Carlisle, Leon Marion, Robin Briggs, Paul Callahan, Patrick Kirk, David Berger, Brian Doherty, Michelle Prager, Matt Goulet, Steve Kylie.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Scott McMillan and William Keon as GAR Hold Trustees for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a motion to reappoint Brendan Concanon to the Historical Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Ruth Bennett, Stephanie Gertz, Stephen Leary, and Michael Tesler to the Human Rights Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a motion to reappoint Sarah Carolin, Martha Ryan, Jason Ryan, Michael Schillen, Paul Wasson, and Sean Weggener to the Memorial Bell Tower Committee for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Mark LaBelle as a registrar for the Town of Hingham for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a motion to reappoint Matthew McGonigal, Roger Nastu, and Jeff St. Mary to the Scholarship Fund Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Mark Bernagario to the Traffic Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a motion to reappoint Tom Hoffman, Peter Schnorr, and Matthew Sexton to the Veterans Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
Make a motion to reappoint Jim Taylor to the Water Transition and Evaluation Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an eye as well. The motion carries.
I make a motion to reappoint Charles Culpen and Stephen Weiss to the Weir River Water System Citizens Advisory Board for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well. The motion carries. Congratulations to all those appointed. Thank you for your service and continued service.
Thank you.
All right. Brings us to our next item, right about seven o'clock. Perfect timing, which is great. All right. Next item on the agenda, seven o'clock is a joint session with the Planning Board and the Hingham Development and Industrial Commission Economic Develop, uh, Development Strategic Plan Presentation. So why don't we have the leadership from the, um, uh, from the boards come up? I see Gordon. Uh, do you want to come up?
We do not have the Chair for the HDI, the HDIC here this evening.
Okay, all right. Um, Emily, you can come up as well. You want to join him? Just, let me just double check. Do we have, so, uh, Gordon, do you have a quorum? Do you need to call your meeting to order?
Virtually and in person, we do.
Okay. So I'm assuming you want to call your meeting to order and adopt the language I, um, mentioned regarding our remote meetings?
With the indulgence of the, uh, new chair, I will, uh, I will do so because he's, uh, remote. So, um, I'd like to open the June 10th meeting of the, uh, Hingham Planning Board. Do I need to read the announcement or?
No, you can just adopt the language as I've, as I presented.
And, and adopt the language as written as, uh, read at the beginning of the select board meeting. Uh, I will call the role, Crystal Haley? Tracy Schrader? Thank you. And Gordon Carr is here. That's the three of us.
Excellent. Great. And no quorum for the HDIC. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Okay. So, um, I'm going to turn it over to Art to kind of lead us through this presentation. So what we're going to do, uh, everybody, thank, thank you all for being here, is we're going to have the presentation. Uh, then we'll take select board comments and questions. Now I'll go to the Planning Board, then I'll go to the HDIC, and then I'll go to anybody in the room and anybody online. So everybody will have a chance to ask questions and make comments as we'd like, and, but that's the order we're going to go in. So with that, Art, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Uh, if I could, I'd just like to provide a, a little table setting before we get into, uh, the meat of the matter. Uh, this work reflects about a year's worth of effort, uh, and, uh, has its genesis in the work of the original Sustainable Budget Task Force, uh, which completed its work in, uh, uh, early 2022. One of their most important findings was that economic development offers over the long term high potential new revenue impact. And that was very important in context of their finding that over the long term, expenses in Hingham are growing faster than revenue. An important foundation for this document was obviously prior work completed by so many people in town in the creation of the, of our master plan. And, uh, uh, two goals in particular that we wanted to focus on throughout this work, uh, are as follows. The, the first goal in the master plan really calls for honoring the town's character. Hingham is a special place. Much effort has been invested over many decades to make it that way. And, uh, going forward, whatever happens in, in, in Hingham, preserving and enhancing that is, is a top priority. A goal, uh, goal number five within, within the master plan also calls for supporting a vibrant, resilient economy. Supporting local enterprises, attracting new ones, attracting non-residential and mixed-use development to desired locations. These are pieces of, of an economic development puzzle or challenge and certainly have informed the work as we are going forward. Uh, tonight, uh, Alex Tramner and Tom Doretsky of Camoyen Associates, a, a leading economic development consulting firm, will be presenting the recommendations and speaking a bit to the, the process that got us to them. It's a short presentation, uh, I guess by necessity, uh, but there's a lot of work that lies behind it. And I just want folks to understand that, uh, a more detailed version of this presentation is available online on the town's website, as is, uh, the market study that provides the foundation for some of the, the use type recommendations. And I also want to acknowledge the, the folks that have had a chance to review it and provide, uh, feedback. We'll certainly get that tonight, but we've certainly had some of that, uh, feedback online. Uh, we have an input form that's available and we certainly will welcome, uh, any feedback, uh, through the end of the week. Uh, with that in mind, I think we're here to, to share. And sharing is a two-way, uh, two-way process. Share what we've learned, share our process, but also learn from, uh, folks who will be here this evening. So with no further ado, I'll hand the presentation over to Alex. Thank you.
Thanks, Art, and everyone for, uh, having us here virtually. Can you guys hear me okay?
Well said.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right. So like Art mentioned, what we want to do tonight is a couple of things. Uh, I know many folks here have been involved in this process, so we won't belabor the point, but I do think it's important to make the connection between the data and the engagement and how that tied into the strategy development. So we just want to give a quick overview of sort of what our task was, what our objective was, and what the geographies were involved in that. Talk a little bit about Hingham's competitive factors, um, in terms of industry and real estate. And all of that lays the groundwork for our third part, which is the actual economic development strategy. We'll lay out three phases of recommendations and the different implications that that's going to have for the town moving forward. Um, and think through how the town can best organize for success to advance those recommendations. Certainly, um, we're, you know, we'll leave time for some conversation and, and Q and A. Um, but we'll take us through a few areas of presentation here. Um, so again, just zooming out to what we set out to do and where we set out to do it. We have three areas of focus. We were looking at downtown Hingham, which has its own unique sort of character and, uh, walkability characteristics. Um, we've got the shipyard, um, and then we've got South Hingham and a piece of North Rockland as well. This was all done in, in collaboration with, uh, the Town of Rockland. Um, so certainly, uh, crossover and overlap in South Hingham and, and Rockland potential. Like Art mentioned, we certainly did consider the previous work that has gone into all of these areas and townwide to, one, understand really community values and what the community as a whole is really looking for in terms of vision for the future of Hingham. Um, it was certainly informative in terms of, you know, where the market had been and, and previous priorities and strategies. We did this really at a time where we're sort of post-COVID, still in a market where things are shifting for office and industrial and commercials. So while all of those supporting documents were certainly helpful, the data that we provided in the market analysis, that is the, you know, most up-to-date, latest data that's going to help tell us about some of those shifts that are really, uh, important to the future of Hingham. All right, um, Art really did lay this out, but just a few more details on the different components that went into this strategy. So on the data analysis side, we've got quite a, uh, deep, deep, uh, market analysis that looks at the real estate context of Hingham within the wider region. So we need to understand, you know, the trends and what's happening in, in the town, but how Hingham fits into the larger picture of the, the region of the Boston metro and even beyond that. So we've got lots of real estate data, data there by sector. And then looking at connecting that to industry potential and industry analysis. So what types of businesses are going to be able to thrive in Hingham based on all of its market factors, based on the workforce availability, based on its competitors, based on its other peers and what they're also trying, trying to attract. So we've got that data component. We've got our engagement component, which helps to fill in some of the gaps and nuances in the data. So we did three in-person visits. Um, but we sat down with a group of businesses early on in the process and did a focus group. We talked one-on-one with folks, um, throughout the planning process, both from businesses, from organizations, uh, both from businesses, from organizations, uh, across different sectors to get a full perspective of, of economic development, the economic development landscape in Hingham. Uh, and then also there were several opportunities for digital feedback. So one of those, within partnership with the Open House that we did, uh, I believe back in November. Um, and so there's been multiple rounds of opportunity for feedback, both in person, digitally, and I anticipate this to be an ongoing conversation. Uh, you know, as market shifts, as financial realities shift for the town, um, this is a solid base for which economic development can move forward, but it should be thought of as a continued conversation. And, uh, we popped on and heard the conversation about, um, ongoing communication with the public, and I, I think economic development is a huge part of that as well. Lastly, just on the strategy development side, we worked closely with Art and Emily to understand, uh, capacity realities at the staff level, uh, local leadership to understand as well, going back to the sort of values and, and community ideals, um, and, and how that played into ultimately where the strategy ended up. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Tom, to talk through the competitive landscape and hit the high points for, um, some of the factors that really contributed to strategy development.
Thanks, Alex. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us here this afternoon. Um, I'm going to try to boil down our 140-plus-page market analysis into a few slides here. As Alex said, kind of hitting the highlights around, uh, Hingham's competitive position within the Boston region and what that means for the types of development and investment, um, that the town's positioned to attract. So as you know, Hingham is well situated within the region, only about 15 miles from Boston. You've got ferry access, commuter rail access, um, and obviously Boston is one of the most innovative metropolitan economies in the country. So being within the Boston region certainly, um, gives a solid foundation for economic development within Hingham. Um, at the same time, proximity is not necessarily the same as participation. Um, there are certainly more high-growth sub-markets within the Boston region that have seen higher job growth in, um, competitive industries, more investment. Places like Burlington, Andover, Quincy, Framingham, Waltham, you know, places that are kind of within a similar range of distance from the central city, but have seen more investment. And that's due to a number of factors, things like more direct highway access, proximity to higher education institutions, um, denser innovation ecosystems, you know, labs, R and D space, co-location of firms within technology clusters and life sciences and so forth. Um, the South Shore, including Hingham, has not experienced that kind of same intensity of growth in a lot of these types of industries. Um, certainly you have Route 3, which offers highway access, but it's not, doesn't offer the kind of same regional interconnectivity that I-95 or I-93 afford, um, communities more to the north and west of the city. And so this impacts both town attraction and also location decisions of employers. Um, also, uh, development costs, um, are high in Hingham, um, because your coastal land costs are high, construction costs are high. Um, and, you know, this also obviously reflects the desirability of Hingham, certainly for residential development, a place for people to live. Um, but it, it can also be challenging for other types of development. So kind of, um, you know, for Hingham to compete effectively, um, we're going to talk about some strategies to deliberately strengthen that economic proposition and kind of, uh, use some of the, the assets that Hingham does have, um, to attract investment. Uh, on the next slide, we've got a few more factors here, uh, workforce strength. So at the local level, we know Hingham's workforce is a significant advantage. High share of residents that are highly educated, um, employed in high-skill sectors, like management, law, education, healthcare. Um, that demographic profile really supports, uh, potential for office-based employment and other knowledge-driven industries that rely on that, uh, talent pool. Um, at the same time, the town does not have a large base of workers in industries like production, logistics, skilled trades, um, which can be, uh, less competitive for more traditional industrial-type uses. Um, another opportunity that's currently, we think, under-leveraged in the town is tourism. So as you all know, Hingham has a lot of historic and recreational assets. Your walkable downtown, your scenic harbor, regional shopping destinations, and it's, it's really accessible, um, by, you know, day trippers from the Boston region and beyond. And so, um, as you know, there, you know, there's no hotels in town, so that limits kind of lodging capacity. Um, you know, uh, Hingham lacks kind of a more cohesive tourism identity or destination branding that, um, you know, people might not know about Hingham in the region the way they might know about a place like Plymouth, for example. Um, and so that's really an asset, being on the waterfront, having all those recreational assets. You have the, the, the downtown shopping district, um, and so forth. That's a big opportunity there. So, uh, overall, kind of for Hingham to grow its economic base, it's going to require kind of a shift from more passive to more proactive economic development. Um, targeted business attraction in the industries that, um, Hingham is well, uh, positioned to attract, professional services, tourism. Um, you know, there may be some need to use, uh, incentives for certain types of sites, leveraging transportation access such as a ferry and the rail, and, and really kind of leveraging those quality-of-life amenities to make, um, to, um, uh, invite in business and investment. So we'll talk about, um, kind of more specific strategies in a minute, but moving ahead here. When we talk about development feasibility, different types of, uh, buildings and, and properties that can be developed in, uh, the community, there's three types of feasibility that we often talk about. So, um, market feasibility answers the question, is there demand for this type of use? Are there customers, um, that this type of use is going to serve? There's financial feasibility, which is, can this be built profitably? Um, would it be attractive for a developer to build this type of use? Are they going to make money off of it, right? Is the return potential enough to make it worth the investment? And then the third is community feasibility. Is it consistent with the values of the community? What residents want to see with, uh, land use policies and goals for the community and so forth? And so for different types of development to be successful, you really need all three of these. And so I'll just briefly kind of run through the list that our market analysis identified as having the highest development potential that checks, um, these boxes. So senior housing, um, lots of demand for senior housing. You have, um, an aging population within the community, um, seniors that are looking to downsize, move into, you know, smaller accommodations, but remain in the community, um, and a high-income senior population. So that makes, um, you know, uh, age-restricted communities, assisted living, um, kind of the whole range of senior housing, um, a strong fit for the town. Next, we've got market rate housing. So anything from single-family, townhouses, small-scale multifamily, all of those things, um, um, are, uh, you know, there's demand for more housing in the Boston region generally and in Hingham because of your, your great quality of life here. And generally through our community engagement efforts, there seemed to be general support for this kind of smaller-scale level of, of market rate housing. Next, um, a chain hotel, um, could be a fit here. Um, as I mentioned before, you don't have any, um, hotels currently in, in town and, um, given, you know, you're kind of at a gateway between, um, you know, more recreational opportunities to the south, Boston to the north, um, and you have a kind of Route 3 access there. There's some potential for a chain hotel that could, um, could, uh, kind of, uh, be a good, uh, base for, for that tourism cluster. Next, specialized industrial uses. So while overall the industrial market in Boston's has softened somewhat, there is available space for kind of your more typical types of uses. Um, a more, um, uh, specialized type of industrial use, a, a purpose-built, built-to-suit type use could make sense here in Hingham for the right industry. Um, and, you know, there's, there's potential there, um, and we'll talk about kind of locations for that in a second. Medical office is another one that came up. Um, again, serving kind of the population, uh, given demographic trends, proximity to South Shore Hospital, um, a medical office could be a fit in town. And then finally, trophy or signature office. Um, trophy office refers to kind of the highest-quality office properties in a given market. So landmark-type buildings, really nice exceptional features, um, you know, architectural details, high-quality construction, all of those things. Um, because Hingham, um, has, um, kind of, you know, the, the prestige of the community as well as, uh, that commuter rail access, the Route 3 access, um, having some kind of trophy office. Um, while maybe in the short term, given the state of the office market right now might be tougher, longer term, there's some opportunity there. Um, you know, generally, while we're seeing a very soft office market in, in most types of office properties, that trophy segment is really what's kind of the exception, the bright spot in the market here. Those are the ones that are filling up quickly, um, because of that kind of trend to, um, to quality space. So those are the, the opportunities. And next, we'll talk about kind of how those align with, uh, the different districts that we looked at. So starting with downtown Hingham to begin with. Um, as you know, this district is, is largely built out. There's not a lot of, uh, space here for a lot of new construction. Um, so we're kind of primarily looking at housing infill development, other types of infill development as an opportunity. You know, it's commercial on the ground floor, maybe bumping up to a second story for housing in some of the buildings where it makes sense. Um, generally looking to improve connectivity to the waterfront, encouraging that kind of, uh, walkability between the waterfront and the downtown area. Um, the post office building could be a potential, um, for some kind of, of development. Maybe a boutique hotel, maybe an entertainment or cultural venue. And then in terms of, you know, sizable development parcels, really it's a station street parking lot that offers, um, the, the greatest potential in terms of size and build-out. And that could be a whole range of mixed-use opportunities, retail, restaurant, residential, hotel, um, community gathering space. Any of those things could make sense there. And again, you know, kind of the goal with this district too is to encourage, um, as a hub for tourism as well. It's already a lovely place to visit. Um, there's more that can be done to kind of, uh, drive people to this district, drive tourism and visitation. And so that's, that was kind of our vision for this district. On the next slide, we've got, uh, the shipyard district. Um, here, uh, I just want to draw your attention. It's a little bit hard to see, but the green circle, um, kind of toward the top, uh, shows a five-minute, uh, walking radius from the MBTA, MBTA ferry. And that's important because, um, it shows the opportunity to, um, bring in people visiting from Boston. So day trippers, you know, potentially folks that don't have a car, that are interested in exploring the region on a weekend or, um, you know, after work one day, whatever it might be. There's potential there with the ferry service, um, to, to drive more people into this district, um, from Boston. And, um, you know, that five-minute walk radius is obviously, you know, closest to the terminals. So the more that can be, you know, packed into that area, uh, the more of a draw it might be for visitors, um, to kind of round out the offerings there. So there's already, um, a fair amount of retail and, and entertainment-type, uh, uses, restaurants. So, um, you know, with the vacant space that's available, with the large, um, MBTA parking lot, there's some opportunities there to encourage more of that type of development. Uh, the MBTA lot in particular, because it's such a large site, this is a really, um, big potential for, for a, a large-scale mixed-use development. Uh, maybe similar, um, type of scale as the existing shipyard build-out. A lot of potential there for different ways that that could be configured. Um, and so that could look like, you know, retail, restaurants, hotel. And this could also be a, a trophy office site, as we talked about before, because it has that ferry access. It's very commutable from the city. It might be appealing to an employer that wants to be accessible both to suburban workers, but also the urban workers, uh, coming from Boston. On the south side of, of Route 3A there, um, you see kind of the Talbot's campus. There's potentially some long-term, uh, opportunities here for some kind of infill development. They've got a lot of parking lots that are underutilized. Um, that could potentially become something like office space or, or retail, or even residential in the future. So a lot of land there that could potentially be used. Um, you know, i- it's probably more of a long-term opportunity. And then the last district is, uh, South Hingham in Northern Rockland here. So a few different areas. This is a, a physically large district, so a few different areas I want to draw your attention to. Uh, starting at the top, the northern end of the district, this is kind of the old Derby Street area, um, right, uh, where the, the Route 3 exit is, um, joins Derby Street. So here, because of that great highway frontage, um, there's a lot of opportunity for a whole slew of different uses up here. Um, the, the kind of fit from a, uh, kind of market standpoint would be retail, food and beverage, recreation, hotel. Those would be strong fits because they have great visibility from Route 3, and, um, they're kind of proximate to other, uh, commercial uses in that area, like the Derby Street shops. Um, further, uh, deeper into the site, kind of northern parts of the site, that could make sense for, uh, more residential-type uses, senior living, um, green space, those sorts of things. So a lot of area there that could be developed into, uh, a, a mixed-use, um, community of sorts. Uh, moving down to Derby Street Shops, that area is already very successful. Long-term potential, there could be some opportunity for some more infill development there, um, with some residential space, maybe second-floor multifamily, um, some of the parking lots could be, um, you know, added, uh, more commercial space and so forth. So that's kind of a long-term potential. And then, um, an important one here on the south side of Route 3, that large, uh, lot in the middle that's currently green, um, that is kind of within the town of Hingham, that's really the prime location opportunity for, um, industrial-type development. So whether that's light industrial, tech-type envelopment, tech, uh, technology-type development, advanced manufacturing, uh, or an office campus, this area, um, makes a, a lot of sense for that type of development. Um, you've got Blue Cross Blue Shield there, there already, as well as existing industrial around it to the north and south. Um, so there's, because it's such a large area, there's a lot of potential there, um, to build that out over time as, uh, industrial makes less sense for a kind of, uh, retail-type uses because it's kind of, uh, you know, it doesn't have the, as good a visibility as some of the other areas that we talked about here. So the best fit's going to be more of your industrial commercial. And we wanted to make sure we reserve a significant area for that economic development, those drivers of industry, um, into the future. So that's where we landed with this district. And with that, I will turn it back over to Alex.
Thanks, Tom. All right, so we've seen each district and particular uses that are a best fit there. In terms of how to, uh, encourage and move along some of those ideas and be able to leverage that market potential and market opportunity, what we've done is laid out three phases of recommendations. And in the plan, you'll see that for each of those phases, you'll see resources required, infrastructure implication, land use implications, and fiscal implications. There's varying levels of impact across all of these. And to be able to move forward successfully, it really is going to take a, uh, concerted effort on the part of staff and leadership to recognize what the potential, uh, implications are across all of these, these different layers. Um, and so we won't get into those specifically in the next slide, but happy to answer any questions there. I'm going to go through the, the phases just at a high level, and then again, happy to answer, answer any additional questions. I think, think of, think of phase one as your near-to-short-term opportunities, really things that can be done in year one or year in year one or year two of a five-year strategic plan. These are going to be your items that are going to have relatively low resources upfront, but have the potential to have quite a high impact. So they're building on quality of place initiatives. And these investments or this work is really going to set the stage for the ability of Hingham to be able to do additional economic development work. So first and foremost, that begins with continuing really to leverage regional and state partnerships. Economic development is a teen sport. It really cannot be done alone and whether that's seeking or whether that's working with state agencies to partner businesses with incentives, or whether that's working regionally to find a home for businesses who might be expanding or relocating. Those connections, that frequency, that built-in trust with those collaborators is so valuable for Hingham and for the region really to be able to take advantage again of these market opportunities. Again, going back to that communication piece, the communication around two pieces. One, what's happening in the business community within Hingham? We heard a lot of great stories, a lot of collaboration across businesses to, you know, hold events or just work together to drive traffic and clientele. And to be able to continue to tell that story again, to elevate Hingham's profile in terms of economic development and really sort of curate a specific brand and message around the types of businesses and business community that exist in Hingham. It's quite a competitive landscape, really nationally, but particularly in the South Shore and sort of Boston metro. So really to be able to have a distinct Hingham message and brand does make a big impact. One, in terms of being able to attract businesses that fit within the profile. And then two, on the visitation side, that has implications as well. Let's see, being able to highlight historic themes and some of Hingham's really historic assets. And I know some of that work is already going on with some of the celebrations around the 250th anniversary of the United States. So this is really a prime opportunity to take advantage of those kinds of activities and build on, build on that activity for future economic potential. Lastly, I will say that again and again, we see in across communities that laying the groundwork at the physical environment really sets the stage for business environment. So whether that's, you know, placemaking activities that bring lighting or safe pedestrian infrastructure, or the ability of someone, you know, to ride their bike down or be able to park safely or whatever it might be, those physical improvements and investments really make a difference in terms of being able to attract and grow business investment. So again, think of these, phase one, as lower, not no resource, but lower resources, but for a high impact on initial economic development efforts. Really building on things that are currently being done, but in a very, very intentional way. All right, moving to phase two, think of these as things that are more in the midterm. So maybe year two, year three, getting on to year four. This is really continuing to invest in tools and really using data strategically to capture that investment potential. So whether that's things like maps and visuals that could, you know, be used to attract businesses at the regional level and tell Hingham's story, really understanding the real estate inventory that is available within Hingham, so that when there is the call about a business that wants to relocate or expand or is thinking about Hingham, that there's a really quick tool to be able to understand what the inventory is. There's certainly publicly available sources to help build that. But to really have that intimate knowledge and relationship with brokers and the real estate community to have that on hand across town departments is really invaluable. In this phase as well, we fit in some potential land use changes. So when Tom was talking about specifically in South Kingham, the implications around housing and supporting, ensuring that there is space available for commercial and industrial activity. Some of that work around the land use changes involved with that would really fall under this phase two, year two and three work. Lastly, looking at phase three, this is really a longer-term endeavor. And again, brings additional need for resources and investment to be able to successfully take on these strategies. So one of the things that we see as so important, again, across communities in Massachusetts, in the Northeast, that the trust that you build with your businesses through a business retention and expansion program, so BRNE program, that's where you're getting your firsthand knowledge of what's happening on the ground and what trends you're seeing between different types of businesses and what opportunities and what challenges. And those programs are a lot of work to set in motion. And of course, there's conversations happening now with businesses and between businesses. But this is really about taking those conversations and turning them into data and making decisions based on that data. So that is not a small effort to undertake and really does require likely a full-time staff member to take that on in addition to other economic development efforts. Here, we talk more about a hotel development strategy to connect with that tourism opportunity. Certainly, real estate and the industry market side would play a role in this. But we do think that there's opportunity to attract a hotel and continue to drive that towards the potential in Hingham. Here, we also look at further developing that specific brand for the town. And that would certainly take some time to develop and roll out and really have the community take on as a whole. And then we've got some longer-term regional efforts as well that might fit in here as well. So whether that's transportation, infrastructure-related, the MBTA parking lot, or of course, the Talbot site in the shipyard as well. So let me just end with this as you marinate on the three phases. Organizing and preparing for collaborations for each of any of those phases is really important to the success of the economic development strategic plan. Like I said, this is really building on work that is being done, but with this plan in hand and this roadmap in hand, working towards a similar vision with similar initiatives. So of course, on the left-hand side, we've, you know, put together a list of some of the local, regional and state partners that would certainly be involved in these efforts. Not a comprehensive list, there's many more that we would expect to join in and grow this list as the plan is carried out over the next five years. But each of these levels is important, again, across many of those different initiatives, whether it's the state, regional, local level, they all have a different role to play in the strategy. Lastly, in the report, you will see that we provided a couple of different examples of how development and industrial corporations are utilized in different communities. They've got different sort of names and entities and, you know, various titles throughout different communities. But whether they're fully staffed, whether they're volunteer, whether they collect local, a local tax to fund their economic development. Lots of different models for organizing an economic development corporation-type entity. And that might be something that Hingham really wants to explore and think through for the HGIC as this plan is taken on. With that, we're going to pause and stop for any Q and A or discussion before we go any further.
Okay, well, Alex and Tom, thank you very much. Before I turn it over to questions, Art, do you have anything else you want to add?
If I could, just a couple of things. First, I want to acknowledge that while we had the opportunity to put this plan together with the support of ARPA funding available to the town, the town of Rockland also provided financial support. And I also want to acknowledge that we had property, private property owners who also contributed to help make this come together. And I'm eager to listen and to engage.
Great, Art, thank you. All right, we'll start with the select board and I'll turn it over to Liz first for comments or questions.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you, Alex and Tom and Art and the team and the public that have been participating along the way. Appreciate all of the input and the report tonight. This is certainly a priority of mine and this study was a recommendation of the Sustainable Budget Task Force. So thrilled to see it moving forward. Art, related to your comment, could you just explain to the public what the role of Rockland was, the town of Rockland, in this partnership?
Yes, Rockland contributed to the financial costs of the project because of our shared interest in the Route 3 slash 228 corridor. You know, in the map for South Kingham, you saw that we actually pointed to a number of development areas, two north of Route 3 and two south of Route 3, including land on the Rockland side. You know, we wanted to look at that together because we have a shared interest in the area. And development on one side of that border is certainly going to impact as well as create opportunity on the other side as well.
Thank you. And I know Alex and Tom, you hit on some of this, but, you know, as we started this presentation, one of the questions in my mind was, you know, what do you see similar communities doing that we aren't doing? And I know you mentioned, you know, some things like the actual infrastructure, whether it's lighting or pedestrian safety or, you know, targeting specific businesses. But can you, you know, if you had to kind of boil it down to three things that you see other communities being really successful with that Hingham isn't currently doing? Could you help us understand that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll maybe add a couple and then Tom, feel free to jump in. I think the thing for me that jumps out is, is a specific economic development brand or a specific brand sort of around the business environment of a community. And I think there's certainly room to do that for the town as a whole, but also for the different districts that we talked about. They all have very different characters and different business mixes and, you know, just attract a different business profile. And I think there's room to think through the sort of value proposition for Hingham and put a specific, whether it's a tagline or image or, you know, there's lots of different ways to do it. But I do think that that's one of the things that Hingham is going to continue to move forward in a pretty competitive economic development landscape, that an economic development-specific brand would be my top item. Tom, what about you jumps out?
Yeah, I would agree with that, just being, laying out a clear vision for what you want to see in these different districts, you know, rolling out the welcome mat to businesses and making it clear, we want this type of business in this location and it's going to be easy for you to get your, you know, your project done if it's in the area that we're, we've set forward in our vision. And then I would just say also, relatedly, but less on the business attraction side and more on the tourism side, again, kind of laying, it's similar, laying out the clear brand for what you want, what your community has to offer and why people should visit.
Great, that's really helpful. And I know that the concept of tourism and historic tourism was certainly in the master plan as well. And some efforts have certainly been made, but there's more to do. And, you know, we're trying to leverage the REB 250, as you mentioned. In terms of the vision for districts, I feel like in the past, there has been discussion about trying to attract businesses and maybe that that was not very fruitful. And it sounds like we've kind of come full circle and you're really recommending that. Would that be accurate?
There are two things on that. I think focusing on your existing business community is absolutely the priority. The businesses that make up your, you know, existing business community, they're the ones that are creating jobs and, you know, serving the local population and contributing to the thriving nature of Hingham. So that's where that business retention and expansion comes in to play. I would say that that is the focus. However, based on Hingham's just positioning geographically and sort of the regional market, there is an opportunity to take advantage of the attraction side of things. On the branding, the branding isn't just for attraction, although it, you know, certainly helps tell the story. It, I think it would really support the existing business community as well, to sort of rally around, you know, a certain vision or message. So the branding goes both ways, it's not just for attraction, although it would play a role. But I do think it would support the existing business community as well.
Excellent. I know a lot of people want to speak, so I'll let them move on.
All right, Julie.
Thank you. Thank you, Art, and thanks to Tom and Alex and to the HGIC and everyone involved in this study. I would pose a question to Art or Tom and Alex about, you know, who we could get to bear the costs of this infrastructure that would be needed for the larger projects.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll start and Tom jump in. I will say from our conversations with developers and across the region, both in Hingham and outside of Hingham as well, that there was a willingness to contribute to infrastructure. Now, you know, when it comes down to dollars and cents, this is all sort of like hypothetical conversations. But there is an acknowledgement that that's certainly a limitation at the moment. But Tom, is it fair to say that that did not necessarily deter potential development concepts?
Yeah, I think, you know, there's certainly, developers are willing to come to the table and discuss what that would look like. You know, there's a desire to invest in Hingham. I think just clarity, reducing some uncertainty around what they, what would be expected of a developer versus what the town might be able to contribute would be key there. And another thing I'll add is, from a market perspective, a financial feasibility perspective, this shouldn't be a surprise really, residential is the driver of profitability for a lot of development in Hingham. It, and so the ability to build residential as part of a project is going to really help it pencil out and be, make a developer more willing to move ahead and contribute to infrastructure.
I think public-private partnership is sort of the takeaway there.
And if I can just build on that, I think part of any, you know, business development engagement is about identifying the opportunity, identifying the roadblocks and finding ways to clear them. You know, we talked a little bit about predictable permitting in the past. But if we're talking about infrastructure, you know, if infrastructure is a but for, there may be resources at the state level that we could look for to address some, to fill some of the gaps in such a way that, you know, we get to the outcome that would be beneficial for the such a way that, you know, we get to the outcome that would be beneficial for the town.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Planning Board. Gordon, since you're the, since you're here up at the table, I'm going to let you run point on Q and A for the Planning Boards.
All right, well, I'll restrain myself because I have thoughts, but I'll try to be brief first to the Camoyen team. Great work. As I've said, I'm familiar with Camoyen Associates having, back when I was a consultant doing projects with them. So I was very pleased when I learned that the town had engaged them and they've delivered every, as much as I would have expected. This is a tricky engagement for an economic development firm like Camoyen, right? Hingham has all kinds of potential and a lot of assets, but some headwinds as well. So I really appreciate the work very much. And, you know, I quote Thomas Sowell, the economist, all the time, who says, "In economics, there's no such thing as solutions, only trade-offs." And in economic development is really much the same, right? So we have to think about what we're trying to accomplish here, and since it came from the Sustainable Budget Task Force, and revenue is one of those big priorities, I think we need to think, you all referenced incentives a bit early on, and this kind of goes to what we were just talking about, that we think of regulatory incentives, not financial incentives, right? So if there is relief that we can provide to leverage a project that needs to get done that can't otherwise, that's where I think we have some opportunity to get the, both the sort of structural infrastructure benefits, but also the tax benefits as we go forward. So I think that's one of the big pieces. I'm going to stay big picture generally on this. Liz, you did mention heritage tourism. That was an overt recommendation from the master plan, and I do think that we should weave that in much more intentionally when we're thinking about the downtown. You know, there are places in Massachusetts that have lovely waterfronts, and there are places that have lovely downtowns, and there are places that have a lot of historic character and history to them. There aren't a lot of places that have all three of those in the proximity that we have, right? So the ability to connect the harbor to Hingham Square, which I am convinced we all take advantage of or take for granted, really how special that is. And then, again, by us being a member of the Historical Society, a real deep history that I think a lot of people are really interested in, and I think we can weave those things together and get a lot more people downtown. As we said, Liz, if you remember, in the master plan, when we think of all of those retailers and those businesses downtown, we kind of have a choice, right? Either we are all, as a community, going to support them ourselves, or we're going to find a way to get a lot of other people from out of town to come in and support them that way, right? And I think that's going to be really important to maintain the strength and the vibrancy of the downtown. So I'd said I would be brief, but I'm not good at that. So I'll pause there. I'll have other thoughts. We can put them in writing and all that kind of stuff, but I want to see if my colleagues, Crystal, who's in the room, Gary, and Tracy are online. Thoughts?
Crystal, if you could go up to the podium and just state your name, position, and address, that'd be great, so that people at home can hear you. Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Crystal Kelly. I live at Seven Independence Lane. I'm a member of the Hingham Planning Board, you know, and I volunteered myself to go first because I was here, and then I can get back to my seat. I think I really appreciate the amount of work and insight and thoughtfulness that went into preparing this presentation. I thought it was incredibly well-done. Thank you so much for everyone who's worked on this. I thought there were some really intriguing ideas too, and some different uses that maybe weren't things that were necessarily obvious to people, you know, particular, sort of the idea of a hotel and, you know, whether it's a chain hotel or boutique hotel, maybe different ideas for that in town. I think that's something that's really well situated here. I think something as a region, the region doesn't have a lot of hotels, there's not a lot of people, places for people to stay, there's not a lot of places for people to have meetings in this area town, you know, large groups having meetings. So I think that's a really exciting, just picking that one out of many, many interesting things that we've heard, exciting things we've heard tonight. Also, like, really, I think the idea of connectivity between the shipyard and downtown Hingham, if we can get that to work somehow, it's a fabulous idea. You know, I'm a ferry commuter, and so, you know, I definitely appreciate, you know, the situational location of everything, and as well, also appreciate how difficult it is to get from the shipyard to down Hingham the way things are currently. And if we could get that to connect better, I think that's wonderful. You know, I certainly see room for the Planning Board here to come in and help effectuate some of these changes, you know, should they be determined to be something that the town wants to do. So, you know, definitely on board for, you know, the challenge here. I had a question for, you know, our consultants. We talked a little bit about having more of a focus on supporting existing businesses and looking to attract new businesses coming in. You know, we talked about some of the outside partners that we have with the state, you know, I'm thinking about the Office of Business Development, I don't know if that's been renamed now. It has?
No, it's still that.
It's still that, okay, okay. So many, so many that recently, so many of the state offices have got new names. You know, I think about that, but I also think about, you know, what we can do more locally here. We talked about, you know, sort of more of an economic focus on some of the local councils that we have, and, you know, what is, what you have seen about, you know, the town's hiring a designated person to work strictly on business development and refocusing, reinvestment, refocusing those energies on attracting new businesses versus it having be like a volunteer board, or the two of them working together?
Great question. To be able to have a full-time staff person for economic development, like, I think it's clear from the three phases that we saw and some of the opportunities, there is certainly enough here for a full-time position with the support of a volunteer board. However, that obviously is a, you know, significant investment into that position. The idea behind sort of the Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3 was to really focus on the partnerships with existing organizations, especially like you're saying at the local level. So the Downtown Association is doing great work, and think about maybe how to connect a couple more opportunities through the HGIC and the Downtown Association and, you know, maybe break in the regional chamber, or, you know, there's lots of different avenues and combinations depending on the event or initiative. It really is sort of a decision locally in terms of the intensity and approach to economic development that the town would like to take on from here.
All right, thank you. I'll yield.
Thank you. Gary, Tracy?
Yeah, I have a question. I'll focus on housing. One of the items you noted was, you know, Hingham kind of compared to other communities, lacks manufacturing talent. You highlighted an area for growth, potential being specialized industrial uses, including technology. How do you attract, how would you recommend attracting that manufacturing talent when, you know, the average cost of housing in Hingham is, if it's not over a million, pushing a million dollars? I mean, even townhomes in the shipyard, you know, which had some backlash 10 years ago or so, you know, are selling for over a million dollars, you know? And in some of these areas that you've identified, you know, the shipyard area, the South Hingham area, you know, I know a lot of those residents feel like, you know, they've already, you know, kind of been forced to deal with a lot of the multifamily housing, you know, and are looking for other areas that maybe can help spread the, you know, spread the housing out.
Yeah, absolutely. Tom, you want to take this one on? I know you have conversations around this.
Yeah, definitely, yes. And so, you know, as workforce comes up again and again as a top issue for any type of business attraction, and yes, the cost of living in Hingham is certainly a limitation for, you know, any type of industry that relies on even, you know, moderate wage workers. In terms of, you know, being able to attract specialized industrial technology-type workers, realistically, it's going to be a combination of, you know, some folks that might be afford, be able to live in workforce-type housing in Hingham, but also a lot of in commuting. Cost of living, you know, as you go inland, as you go south, is a little bit more affordable. And so having access to those areas, you know, Brockton, places like that that aren't too far, that at least, you know, provides some access to workers in those sorts of positions. But, yeah, I mean, it's certainly a tough issue that every community in the Boston area deals with.
I will say too, just for the types of businesses and mix that we're talking about, when we think about like the ideal business, and that's not always the case, but on the sort of technology, like more professional side, maybe there's some very specialized, like, very specialized manufacturing happening in the specific space, but perhaps it's a company that has like a hybrid model that folks are in the office two to three days a week and not every day to cut down on the in commuting, or maybe there's some remote work. But, I mean, manufacturing, even the higher tech, right, there's still going to be that in-person role, so it will continue to be a challenge, to go back to what Gordon was saying, there's always trade-offs.
Gary?
Carrie, you muted.
No, I controlled that. That's good. Yeah, I wanted to thank you for a very comprehensive and informative study and report. I think it's excellent to take a deep dive and look at Hingham's constraints and opportunities that we have. It can help us kind of set the stage of moving forward. We've done, the town has done some very good work leading into this, the master plan, recent master plan, you know, some of the studies in South Hingham plans, and the initial mixed-use plan that was developed for the shipyard. One of the things that I'd like to focus on as I'm an architect and a planner is kind of the concept of village-making or town-making. And focus on, you know, we're talking about uses and we're talking about business opportunities and trends and demographics and what have you, but I think one of the things that I think is so important in this kind of a discussion is how do we create and help develop the, and foster the image of Hingham, because the image of Hingham is fundamentally a series of villages. And I think what makes, that's an identity, a sense of place. Why do people, why are people attracted to Hingham compared to an attraction to, let's say, another town? We have intact kind of the historical settlement patterns that go back to the 1600s in this town, and we've expanded and filled in between them. But fundamentally, Hingham is a series of five, five essential villages, and I just wanted to just say a quote that has always been important in my thinking in terms of design, in that "The history of a nation is only a history of its villages written large." And this was written by Woodrow Wilson in 1900. And I think there's something there. And, you know, we have, for example, the shipyard, which has a series of, you know, just looking at a village, it's really a series of mixed uses that are complementary and supportive and nurturing. And as Jane Jacobs said, who was one of the most influential planners I had ever read her works from, said that, you know, "We have a series of primary economic generators, and we have a series of secondary economic generators, which are fundamentally services to support the primary." And going back to what you have said strongly in your report, that housing is such a critical driver in terms of the financial and the identity of what we can do to help build and rebuild our current villages, but also perhaps some new villages, for example, in South Hingham at the A.W. Perry property and also in North Rockland. And I'm thinking that, you know, in looking at some of the studies that were done, A.W. Perry put together a master plan eight or nine or 10 years ago, which talked about a series of mixed uses. And it talked about placemaking and setting a certain design plan that would help articulate how we might develop some of these uses. I mean, for example, looking at the COVID experience, we have a lot of young families who can't afford to start out in the town, but we all, in a more traditional kind of a housing scenario where you commute to work, I'm thinking of housing that basically focuses on maker spaces where you could have, in the home, most homes now have a space, a serious space, that fundamentally is where we do computer work and digital work and internet work and at-home industry. And I'm just thinking, and I'm just, this is just as an example, could we use, could we do a series of studies on different programmatic housing types, which help be the basis of a primary economic generator in the shipyard, in downtown Hingham, and in South Hingham? And could we also, in a parallel venue, take a look at some smaller incubator-type industries? I mean, for example, in this area of the world, so close to MIT and Kendall Square, we have a, I think, a great opportunity for green energy technologies, you know? Perhaps we could look at a green tech center or something like that in South Hingham where you could create a facility, where in that facility you could have, be crossed between a home show and an industrial show, where you could basically have full-size mockups of homes that are basically looking at alternative technologies, technologies that are going away from fossil fuels. I mean, I was just thinking, I look at all of the properties that are for lease in the A.W. Perry Industrial Park, and I'm thinking, you know, there's probably 400,000 square feet of space there that's underutilized. Or could we approach the Amazon folks? You know, there's a brand-new building there that is completely outfitted but vacant, not used. Could we, could we look at some of these spaces and say, could we put in some alternative energy programming? I just put up these out as some suggestions, and I know I'm probably going on too long, but I think that one of the most successful things about projects that we've done in Hingham have been the ones that have an identity that creates a destination. I think Derby Shops, one of the reasons Derby Shops is so successful, is because it creates that identity and that destination. And how can we do that in other areas? I think that maybe it's time to bring in architects and planners who could help illustrate and help develop some of the conceptual aspects of these trends that you're wanting to encourage in terms of growth in the town, which would help us integrate these kinds of constraints and opportunities into helping further the growth of the current identity of the town. Thanks for your consideration.
Thanks, Gary.
That's awesome, yes.
Great, thank you. Do any members from the HDIC have any questions or comments that are here? None in the room. Anybody from the HDIC online would like to ask a question or comment? Okay, I don't see any HDIC members. So let me turn it over to members in the room. Anybody in the room would like to have a comment or question? If you could just come up to the, Tom, could you bring the microphone over to that gentleman again? And if you could state your name and address for the record when you ask your question, that'd be appreciated. So we'll bring you the mic.
Again, for those that you weren't here, I'm Bill Schrod. I've been around since '66 in the town. Now, my role has got to be that I work with organizations. I'm more a historian than anyone active. I'd make two comments here. One, I worked for a boss who was a good problem solver, and he said, "I use the prison yard approach." Well, that was 40 or 50 years ago, and prison yards in that time, the activity was breaking big stones into small stones. So applying that concept here, it's much easier for me to understand what you're doing if I look at this as two separate projects. The south, which is easy, get some billionaire money in here and tell them to understand what you're doing if I look at this as two separate projects. Uh, the south, which is easy, get, get some billionaire money in here and tell me you got a place to develop. It's on 3A, it's near a big shopping center. It's too bad we didn't get the airport, and that'll develop. And if you do it right, you get some places to make money. And guess what? Corporates spend money near where the bosses live. That takes care of that end, and I think, and I think you can do it separately. The north end, you're troubled by these terrible 228 and 3A are chopping this town into pieces. I tried a few decades ago to reroute 228 down the Hangum Cohasset Line because it was on a map in, uh, 1636, right there. And I never found out why we didn't do it. Uh, we lost a town meeting, uh, because there was another complication, and two sides got together and both lost. Uh, so, and the other thing that happened at the shipyard, uh, we were here developing, and that went through some iterations of private, and then the town took over and on and on. Near the end, we had a traffic analyst come in, and he said, "The shipyard and its facilities, Hangum will be a minor user. The major user will be Waymouth and towns that way." And we immediately tried to make some road modifications to improve access, uh, from those towns. Well, people in this town went ape. If you're going to widen a road in front of my house or do this, uh, the second thing we were going to do was to time the traffic lights. So in the morning, all the lights would facilitate going to Boston, and in the evening, all the lights would facilitate going this way and speed up that traffic. Of course, now we got this constant traffic bypassing all those lights and going through downtown Hangum. So, I don't know, I would just say for this northern end, and when I hear hotels, I hear more people, more traffic. I just think, and I think the idea of other connections, it's all terrific. Maybe you need an elevated train or something between the shipyard and downtown. I just think you gotta, transportation's going to come up and hit you on a lot of these projects. And I hope every project requires a line, how much more traffic? Where will it be? So that you know, kind of know what you're doing, and you can add this stuff up. And frankly, I didn't hear much about that, uh, tonight. I'm sure it's in the background, but I would put it up front with numbers everywhere so you guys can add up, uh, the traffic situation here. In the south, I think it's easy. Just find the right businessmen and money, and they'll come in and do the developments and stay, stay the hell out of it. Let it be private, privately developed, and it'll get done. Now, so that's the way I would look at this, two projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the room have any questions or comments? All right, I'm going to go to online now. I saw Diane Denapoli's, uh, hand up. Diane, 16 Gardner Street, I believe. If I have the address wrong, let me know.
Uh-oh, that might be a problem if you know my address, Bill.
I've known you for a long time.
Okay, well, Diane Denapoli, 16 Gardner Street. Thank you, Bill, for acknowledging me. Uh, I'm really glad I heard you, both Alex and Tom, talk about brand, because when I read the report, that was the one thing I felt like I, I didn't quite take away, um, you know, what are we doing? Why are we building it? Why would someone come here? What are you selling? It's the simplest way of putting it. Do you have any recommendations now that you've spent about a year in Hangum? God bless you. Um, what do you see could be the brand? Or what do you see? Do you have a successful town or similar to Hangum, maybe in size and population and wealth and all that stuff, that we could look to as a success? How did they take, as Gary was talking about, disconnected villages that all have unique vibes and kind of make it Hangum is about like? Um, maybe that wasn't in this, the scope of your initial, um, kind of ask, but I feel like we do need to get on top of that quickly because so much of that drives, who's going to be on these volunteer boards? What are we looking for? Are we trying to get artists, scientists, everybody? How do you do that? So what would your recommendation be as far as branding and how that branding drives the three different steps of your, uh, phase?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this is, it's sort of the, the fun, creative part, right? We've, so economic development marketing is its own, um, you know, its own sort of sector. And so we can certainly recommend some, uh, you know, additional partners for who might carry forward that type of work. I will say we've seen communities do it a lot of different ways. We've seen it be, uh, community-driven. Uh, a community in Connecticut did a, uh, like a town-wide effort and had everyone submit a version of a logo or tagline, and they went through, not a competitive process necessarily, but they went through this public process of putting together their town logo from public input, um, and that's what they use today. So, um, you could really take it down to the grassroots and do it at the community level. You could build on some of the work and efforts that we did with the business community and the downtown association and sort of work at a little bit more, uh, you know, business level and have them sort of, we certainly went through a process of, you know, what makes Hangum stand out and what's competitive. So we've got those, those factors and things noted down, but to turn that into the creative process, I have to imagine that that talent exists locally. So it might be interesting to sort of so, source it locally, um, and build on the data and factors that we've got and just take it to the next level with the, um, the creative side of things.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would also just add to that, I think, just kind of boiling it down. Why visit Hangum? Heritage and history's got to be in there, and recreation and nature, um, both, you know, waterfront and, and kind of trails and, and parks and those sorts of things. I think, you know, those are the big things. And then, and then the shopping as well. I think for me, those are the three things in any kind of visitation campaign.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Borger, I see you're up.
Um, I had to unmute there. Um, I thought your a, a, analysis was excellent. I thought the Venn diagram showing the intersection area of the three feasibilities was an especially powerful model to help understand this. What occurred to me, um, was that, uh, perhaps one logical market to appeal to is, uh, people of our, my demographic who are seeking, or perhaps a little bit younger than me, who are seeking to downsize. We know, we've hea- heard a lot about the housing crisis, we need more housing, and we've got a logjam in that, you know, many, uh, people my age or younger would like to downsize, uh, to, you know, uh, a nice upscale but much smaller, um, residence. But that means that they're competing with younger families who are also looking to get into smaller houses as a starter. So what, uh, occurred, I was very interested in what you had to say about the Talbot Campus. And so I'd like you to comment on that specific demographic and the opportunities that might be presenting there, namely, development of fairly upscale condos in a place like the Talbot Campus. Um, that would, uh, move us, I think, if we, the more that we zero in on specific market niches like that, um, you move from generally having an open-for-business sign to actually going out, finding potential partners, engaging with them, recruiting with them, trying to facilitate on a concierge basis, they're doing projects in the town, helping them through all the gates they have to get through. Um, but the downsizing market strikes me as logical. It doesn't, you know, it probably minimizes demand on the school systems, um, but it, 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 it really trades on what people have been talking about, which is the amenities and the reputation and the lifestyle that's available in Hangum that's part of our brand. So, uh, any, any thoughts you might have would be interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, um, that type of product checks a lot of boxes. Certainly, there's market demand for it that came through, um, clear in the market analysis. Fiscally, that tends to be net positive, as you mentioned. Not a lot of schoolchildren, kind of high-value of residential product generating tax revenue. Um, I think there's a few different areas in our study geographically that that could make sense. Talbot site makes sense to me as a potential, um, potentially some infill downtown, uh, Station Street Lot or, or, um, maybe some, uh, smaller properties in downtown, um, where you could fit some senior condos. And then also in, in South Hangum, in kind of the more interior parts of that old Derby Street area, um, as well. I think that could make sense. So I said, yeah, there's certainly a market potential for that.
Great, thanks. Great. Uh, Chris Good. Chris, name and address, please.
Sorry, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Uh, Chris Good, um, 10 Hilltop Road, I'm a member of HDI, HIGC. Just want to commend Art and, and the consultants for the hard work on this. They put a great deal of, uh, effort and time and listened to a great deal of input from the HD, HDIC and from the select board. And I, I think it's really important that we all talk about a regional approach, um, to economic development. We can't ignore what's going on in Waymouth or Rockland or, or Norwell. And it, it's great that this report was, um, funded in, in, by Todd Rockland, and, and their planner was involved in all of this too, because what happens in South Hangum, and if you look at the burgeoning growth of South Shore Hospital, I think that's something that we all ought to be talking about. And look at something that's right in front of us, and look at, you know, medical device and our medical, um, that infrastructure that South Shore Hospital needs, and, and look how we can accommodate them in South Hangum. And, and look at it as a regional pros, you know, working hand-to-hand with our, um, partners in the, in the, um, neighboring towns. So I just want to commend Art and the team for doing a great job.
Chris, thank you very much. Josh Ross, you're up, Josh.
Hold on, can you hear me? Oh, can you hear me?
Ron and Claire.
Great. Joshua Ross, 125 Wampituck Road. I was wondering if you guys could talk a little bit about, um, when we talk about new housing, it's, you know, we get the one-time shot of new construction put into the revenue stream, and then it gets mixed in to the overall property tax, Prop 2 and 1/2, and it's kind of stuck there. Um, can you talk a little bit about, um, when you guys look at what, we need recurring revenue in town, not sort of something that's a, a one-time shot of adrenaline and then gets mixed in the fold and budgeted in? Um, what's sort of the breakdown and, and, and some of the things that, you know, you met, you mentioned it with hotels. I, I think that's a huge opportunity with, um, room tax, potential restaurants, potential convention space, that sort of stuff. Did you guys do a, an analysis with breakdown of, of, of that sort of thing? Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. We don't have a full analysis. That would be the next step. However, we did talk a lot about fiscal implications. Tom, that's your round.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I take your point about housing kind of being a one-shot-in-the-arm thing, but, you know, that does continue. It's, it's kind of overall, is it a net fiscal benefit to the community? And that depends on the type of housing, certainly, but some types of housing, senior in particular, is an ongoing, large fiscal benefit, um, and revenue stream to the community in terms of property tax. So I wouldn't, um, necessarily write that off so much as, um, you know, positive fiscally, um, you know, uh, certainly industrial and office space are also, um, very strongly net positive in most cases in the property tax realm. But, you know, when we're talking about Massachusetts communities, there's not that many sources of revenue that we're looking at. So property tax is, is certainly the big one. You mentioned meals tax, room tax, and so forth. And so, you know, it's, it's really property taxes is going to be the, the biggest driver by far in terms of source of revenue, and identifying those net fiscally positive developments are, are really kind of like key to maximizing that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I don't see anybody else. Um, Mr. Kelly, name and address, sir.
Joe Kelly, 7 Independence Lane. Uh, just a question about the connectivity of like the shipyard and downtown Hangum. Is, is it worth the investment for the town? And is there, I, I just wondering if, would it be worth it for us to make the infrastructure improvements and add things like the blue bikes so that people could take the bike from the shipyard into downtown Hangum, or other waypoints throughout Hangum if we had these stations set up? Would that have a dramatic impact immediately? Did you guys look at any of that stuff?
Yeah, so, you know, we don't have quantitative measurement of that. I think the important thing to think about in terms of the implications that those investments would have is that, again, it goes back to communication and branding. Like, you've got to teach people then how to use the bikes and, and how to set the expectation that you can use these to get to downtown, and here's the best and safest route, and, um, you can make it in five minutes' flat, or, you know, whatever it is, that the real change is going to come over time, and that comes with communication, with elected officials, you know, using it for photo op and, and showing the community, and working with regional partners on the, uh, tourism and marketing side to show this new investment and, hey, you can take the ferry and, and make this trip. So that is one of the things that I would say is, is a lower resource, but high-impact investment. However, it does come with related communication, um, you know, add-ons to be able to fully realize the success of those kinds of investments.
Thanks.
And I, I think it'd probably be worth, you know, some sort of pilot program to test some of those things, like the bikes, or, or even like a, a shuttle on like a Saturday or something to see, you know, do some kind of marketing campaign, see if you can get people to come in from Boston and have a shuttle that takes them downtown. You know, something like that, that's not a big infrastructure commitment, but, um, you know, a way to kind of test the waters to see if there's any traction there.
And I will say, we can't fully, you know, we, we tell our businesses that we interview that it's all confidential, so we can't fully reveal, you know, specific conversations. But I will say that we had private sector, um, businesses say that they would be willing to support and partner in those types of pilots. Um, so certainly worth the conversation, again, at the business level, to see who's willing to invest and partner on that pilot and then take it from there.
Great. Uh, one other question I have is, w- would it be worth the investment to the town to add something like free public broadband for people that come into town, or at least at the waypoints that people would visit us at?
I mean, that's another huge, um, I don't even, I, I was going to say placemaking effort, but it, it goes even beyond placemaking, right? It's infrastructure, definitely free public Wi-Fi is something that we've seen across a lot of communities. It's everyone, you know, they're going to plan their next restaurant stop on their phone. Um, and if you've got out-of-towners from, you know, globally, from, from international communities, then having that Wi-Fi is, is essential to expect them to stay and plan a long-ish trip. So, um, I, I, you know, without seeing the sort of fiscal implications and costs, it certainly would be one of those things that could be, um, a huge benefit to building the visitation potential. Tom, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, right, like that alone is not going to bring people to Hangum, but it's part of the package and the, you know, making a visitor want to stay for longer, I would say.
Great, thank you.
All right, John Borger, I see your hand up again. I'm going to give you the last question. Go ahead. John, you still have a question, or was that just leftover from your last question?
Yeah, I do have a, a question. Uh, I would like to, uh, I'd like you to comment on, uh, the potential for, um, citing the, uh, our ownership of our own public, uh, electric utility, the, the, uh, Hangum Municipal Lighting Plant. Uh, we pay, last I checked, 17.7 cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, the statewide average, I think, is around like 31 or so cents. We're 43% lower. Uh, in the next five years, uh, 12 or 13 natural gas, uh, liquefied natural gas, uh, export facilities are coming online. We're probably going to see the end of cheap energy, cheap gas. And, uh, I, I, so I would like to see, uh, part of our And I, so I would like to see part of our marketing efforts cite the light plant as a resource and specifically its reliability and also its excellent track record in constraining rate increases and the projections for the future. This is, this would be part of an overall marketing for residential or light industrial development. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Good comment. All right, I'm going to wrap it up by turning to Art. Art, so what's the next steps here?
Well, first I want to thank everybody for their time, their attention, their patience and sharing their insights. Everybody has something to offer and to contribute. I think our next steps are to finalize this work so that we can make it clear and make it widely available in the community, but also to become a foundation for communicating what we'd like to see with our partners beyond Hingham. Start that process of the, of creating economic development opportunities that will benefit the town. So, you know, this is the, by comparison, this is the easy work and we're setting the table for the, the, the deep digging that we will be doing.
Could I ask a question, Bill? Did you say, Art, in the beginning that you're still collecting public feedback?
We are. We have a, in addition to obviously this engagement tonight, we've had a, an opportunity for folks to provide comments to us through our online, through our webpage where we have the draft report as well as the, the detail of our market study. And we'll be keeping that open at least till the end of this week.
Who should people email Art with comments or any other feedback or questions?
I would say send directly to me at this point. I want to see them and I want to understand them. So if it's really simple and direct, you can always email me at roberta@hingham-ma.gov.
Great, thank you. All right, great discussion. You know, the journey of a thousand miles begins with the first step, right? So made the first step tonight. So with that, I'll turn to Gordon. Do you want to adjourn your board?
Oh, great, thank you. So I will make a motion to adjourn the June 10th meeting of the Hingham Planning Board. Thank you. All in favor, seeing who's unmuted first. Tracy?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Crystal?
Aye.
And Gordon's an aye as well.
Okay, thank you. Good seeing you, Gordon. Crystal, good to see you too.
And if I may, thanks to the members of the HDIC who joined us this evening.
Yes, thank you for being here, yeah. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will turn to Town Administrator Select Board Report. So let me start with Art.
Thank you. I have two this evening. I'll try to keep it brief. First, I just want to let folks know that our engagement and our work to promote improved cell service in Hingham, I think we're, we're seeing some progress. Verizon at the end of April completed their project at 30 Green Street to install cell infrastructure and have since been in a month-long process of tuning their antennas. In recent days, staff and a few others have told me that their experience with Verizon cell service in the square has improved substantially. I've noticed that in several locations, in my car, outside of my car, inside buildings. I think it, it's a, a sign of progress and I would certainly invite folks to let me know if they are Verizon subscribers and if their service in the square is inadequate. It would be helpful for us to know. The second item I want to share is just to let folks know that, you know, we're heading towards the Independence Day holiday for our nation and that on the 2nd of July, Hingham is hosting its Hingham Harbor Celebration, its first drone show at the town pier in Bathing Beach. The centerpiece is a drone show to, to provide a, a great visual display after the sun sets or after, after dark, if you will. But the festivities kick off at 6:00 with food trucks and, and a concert at 7:00 featuring Booty Vortex, a, an 80s cover band that I'm told is outstanding.
They are very good.
And this is a, this event reflects a collaboration of the Hingham Historical Society, the town, through the Harbor Development Committee, the Hingham Lions Club and the donation and support of, of many people. And I just want folks to know that it's, it's, it's coming fast. It's on Wednesday, the 2nd, and it's a great opportunity for the town.
Great news about Verizon, by the way. And what Art said about the cellphone service, if you've noticed improvement or change, please let me know as well. I'm, I hear a lot from residents about cellphone service. I worked with Verizon for many years, so happy to see that Green Street project finally go through. Fantastic. Way to go Verizon. Michelle, anything?
Sure, just a short one. We are wrapping up fiscal year '25 on June 30th, 2025, and we'll start to do some of the year-end transfers with the board and, and the advisory committee next week. You have the last two months of this fiscal year and the first 15 days of July to do them, so we'll probably do them in two parts.
Great, thank you. Tom?
Very quickly, just, tonight was a showcase of all the work that Art does. And it's a ton of work that goes into it. And I think the highlight was at the very end when I got to hear Art, Robert, say the words Booty Vortex. That was great. Thank you.
My wife will enjoy that too.
Julie, anything tonight?
Well, Bill, you might want to add into this, but the last two days, the, the Town of Hingham Public School third graders have been going to Old Ship Meeting House to conduct a mock town meeting. This is an effort that's been going on for the last several years and it's just wonderful to see the kids come up with their own worn articles and debate them and vote on them. And we had our, our real-life town moderator, Michael Puzo, presiding and, and also we were treated to a concert when he sang The Star-Spangled Banner. Well, we all did, but he was really excellent. So anyway, I just wanted to thank Bev Vernon for her efforts over the years with this program, the Old Ship Meeting House volunteers, the Hingham Historical Society, and it's just a treat to see the kids in action, democracy in action. So, and the League of Women Voters was involved as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That was a great event. I was there on Monday, yeah. Liz, anything?
Just, I'm glad that that was a success again this year. Next Tuesday, the 17th, I believe, is Civics Day at the middle school, so more democracy in action. The kids come up with projects and we get to see their, their results and their feedback and it definitely informs some decisions. They were involved in the cell service last year, so really interesting to see the kids. Thank you, Art. Great presentation. I think, thought that was a great discussion with the planning board and HDIC and the public, and I'm sure the first of, of many. So thank you to everybody that participated.
I attended graduation on Saturday and want to congratulate all the 2025 Hingham High School graduates. The rain held off thankfully. It was poor later in the day, so it was a great day. Want to note that all the student speakers did a great job, but those of you who don't know, Liz's son, Ryan, is, was, gave the salutatorian, I can't even say that because he was second in his class. I was second from the bottom of my class. But he was number two in his class and he gave a phenomenal address, very poised or confident and, you know, takes after his mom with public speaking. So congratulations to the Klein family and all the graduates of 2025.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the class of 2025. They're very impressive.
Great class. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned. See you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments and services. So why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.